This time I'll call the December 6, 2021 council meeting to order. At this time, the Honorable Joel Hamilton from District 6 will lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, thank you for gathering us safely in these chambers tonight to conduct the business of this county. We thank you for our many blessings and the opportunity to continue to serve our community. Please grant us wisdom as we consider the issues before us. Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I heard some participation from out there in the gallery from the little ones. That's cute. We don't have any oath of office and nothing for the public forum. At this time, we have appearances staff to provide an update on county parks.
Good evening, members of council. Mike Moore, Assistant County Manager, Parks, Public Works and Engineering. I have provided in your package an update, which you can kind of follow along as I cover the latest updates. We've been fairly busy this time of year with a lot of things going on. I'm going to primarily update you on which projects are kind of active and ongoing at our parks. Start off with Ebenezer. As you all know, there were some, a lot of interest and a lot of participation, a lot of attendance at the park over the summer. We had some concerns with traffic, so we had a traffic consultant essentially conduct a survey over the Labor Day weekend. We captured the data. We're right now analyzing that data. We've taken some of the inputs we got from the, from the neighbors, and they're going to finalize some study, the study and some recommendations just to improve that. And that could include actual capital improvements at the park. So we're going to look at what they have, which leads me into the next one. The next bullet, Park Improvements. We had a lot of improvements to the park, which included the pier, the great lawn and some other things. But there's some other comments we've gotten back from some of the attendants. Some of the folks have been at the park that included the restrooms, some campsite improvements and drainage. So we're going to look at all of that to include the traffic survey and work on a design contract. And that would come before council. We're hoping for the next meeting is our intention right now. Next park is Allison Creek. As you all know, where this summer we approved, you all approved the lease and utility agreements. Construction has commenced. It started in September 2021. It's being managed by Duke Energy. Scheduled completion date is December 2022. By all accounts, it's on track for that. And so as you all know as well, the ramp is going to be closed through the end of construction. So we're, we'll work to mitigate that potentially increased number of amount of traffic at Ebenezer Park over next summer. We're going to pay close attention to that and hopefully get some more information again from the consultants. Next one is the Bethel Lake Wiley Preservation Parks District. We closed on Woodin Park, which is an 87 acre property at 5649 Highway 557 in Clover. That we are now, the staff is now looking at plans for facilities and maintenance repairs and improvements, how we're going to go about that as well. Eventually, we'll be getting with the committee on a master plan for that. The next property that closed was the known now as the Goat Farm. It's a 6.9 acre property at 3972 Hansville Highway in York. In that case, the, there's an agreement that the seller is going to remain on that property through the February. And so we've got the maintenance and things covered, but we're still going to plan for follow on maintaining and making improvements to that park as well as a master plan. In the agenda tonight, there's a contract for five acres for the future dog park. So that is in, in the agenda. And hopefully with the approval of that, we'll be able to go forward with planning for that park and a master plan and get a design on that. There's other preservation parks acquisition projects that are ongoing. As I mentioned before, we're planning for the, excuse me, grounds and facilities maintenance. Our next park is Veterans Memorial Park. As you may have noticed coming in, we've got the new sign that was installed on that park, front right corner of it as you're facing from Liberty Street and the associated landscaping is ongoing. We're also looking at improvements on, for on-street parking on Garner Street and with sidewalk and landscaping in design. The next park is Worth Mountain. As you all know, we awarded a contract for master plan. We've had a kickoff meeting and a concept design review. And the next event, there's a site visit scheduled on the 17th of December this month to go out and have the group that's looking at the master plan tour the site. Next, Danny's Mountain. We have a contract amendment for Phase 1 trailhead construction plans. We plan to bring that to council in January. In the meantime, we're coordinating to have a Health Environmental Protection Committee meeting to consider that, that master plan prior to awarding that contract for the design as well as a master plan, a public input meeting to be determined hopefully in January of 2022. Last but certainly not least, Katava Ben Preserve. As you all know, the master plan was approved by the committee and adopted by the council. We have established the park name and management was tasked with Phase 1 of the park development. What currently have underway is preliminary engineering contract for council approval in January for the Phase 1 park development, which that includes the park arrival, the gatehouse entry, river gate, greenway and hiking trail system. Other items that weren't Phase 1, but were also tasked through the master plan included utilities, master plan. We're going to look at all the utilities there as well as telecommunications. We're working right now to have a preliminary engineering contract for council approval in January. Management is pursuing grants writing and branding and marketing. So those are two items that we're going to continue to look at as far as what grants we can leverage and continue to work to do the branding and marketing for the park. We also had some existing residential structures that were present and in the master plan called for their abatement or for their demolition. So we're going through the process now to abate those structures of all the hazardous materials and then we'll schedule a demolition in 2022. On under park maintenance, I just bring it to your attention. We're going to be conducting controlled preventative burns and thinning under the forestry contract that was awarded by council. We've also leveraged grant money for that. It's going to essentially be at no cost to the county. And that will provide for fire breaks and it will mitigate the potential for wildfires. A lot of that work had not been done for some period of time. And so we want to be careful in maintaining that in the event we got dry conditions or drought that we don't have unintended consequences of a fire that could spread. And then I just bring your attention, the Parks Department. I know there's been a lot of discussion of that. We're working in management to come up with a plan to present to council hopefully in February on the retreat. We'll have that discussion, how we want to move forward with the Parks Department. That concludes my update. Penny, any questions you may have?
Any questions? Mike, I know I speak for council when we say we appreciate all the work that you and staff are doing. I know that this is a huge effort and one of the most recent ones with Woodin. That's exciting. Allison's doing a great job with the marketing on that. But these are exciting things and we're very blessed to have, you know, this touch all areas of the county. Thank you for, thank you for your work. Please let your staff know that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mike.
We do not have anyone for public forum. Is there a motion on consent?
Move to approve consent agenda. Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Move to public hearings. We have rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading of case number 21-20, tax map number 71400023 to rezone from AGC to LI, 9.92 acres in District 7. Mr. Buono.
Evening council. This is a very straightforward application. The subject property is on the west side of 77, the south side of Colethorpe Road. It's property that's in the ownership of the Colethorpe family. It's just under 10 acres and the rezoning is seeking to go from AGC to LI. So here is a sketch plan of the site. Their proposal at the moment is to move forward with two separate buildings of 30,000, 33,000 square feet each. And they would be flex buildings that would have light industrial uses located in them. So as the comprehensive plan is looking for I-77 corridor employment as the future land use designation is really looking for those employment-driven uses. And this type of use would certainly suit that category. And there are some existing properties on the south side that is already zoned LI. So staff recommends approval of this rezoning request and by a vote of 62, Planning Commission likewise recommended.
Any questions of staff?
Are these, what is going in there again?
They are flex buildings. So I don't believe they have tenants lined up already, but I think the applicant might be able to fill you in more if they have consent.
How many square, is it, so these are basically office space, et cetera, that?
Yeah, they might be light manufacturing. It might be office, flex spaces.
Thank you.
So what conditions could have been included in that presentation? It's that, you know, the Planning Commission didn't request any conditions. What conditions could be on that if they were concerned about lighting and noise issues?
Staff didn't have any recommended conditions. The Planning Commission talked a little bit. I think one of the planning commissioners lives in the nearby neighborhood there. There's some potential concern about maybe there's some lighting issues that could stem from a potential user of the site. But they didn't have any specific conditions in mind. So I'm not sure if there's any to be included.
I don't know what the uses for that would be, but I mean, my concern would be, is it, is it like a, can it be a 24-hour thing, like some of the concrete plants where they're working at night and that, that sort of thing?
No, a concrete plant would have to be ID. So this is really meant to be the low-impact type of.
So it's not nighttime operation of any kind?
Doesn't our ordinance dictate better lighting that shines down and not more outdoors in the neighborhoods?
Correct.
Okay. And if they're building buildings, this is probably not going to be some kind of outside operations, more inside, correct?
It would be interior, yeah.
Any other questions of staff before we open it up for public hearing? Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? If so, if you'll come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Tim Heeline. My address is 1830 Hansville Highway. Good evening, council. I want to thank you for your time and your energy you put into your jobs. Number one. Number two, this land over there has been in the family forever. It's got an old brick ranch home on it. They're going to remove that house and they're applying right now to put that on a lot and has a rental. But the buyers of this property are, they've built probably half a dozen flex space uses. And they, the only one they've ever had a use upfront for was their personal building. A large commercial HVAC contractor in Charlotte. They bought other land and done flex space. They haven't had tenants. They build above-average flex space, higher rents than normal. So they get above-average clients that are going in flex space. We met with, talked with Diane quite a bit, Diane Dill, about what could go there. I had the property, have the property listed and several people wanted to, buyers, potential buyers wanted to do residential there where they'd run a little road in and either do apartments or townhomes or condos, which would have made two new corners out on Colethorp Road, which would have, could have potentially been asked to be used for commercial. Staff didn't want that. So we said, okay, what do you, what would you support? And they, we talked about LI and the uses there. So the sellers were not crazy about that because it really devalued the land about 500 some thousand. But they're fine with this buyer, with what they want to do. The two buildings they're going to build are going to be above average in minimum what you can do with LI flex space. They go over and above the call of duty on their landscaping. Lighting was an issue at the Planning Commission meeting. It came up. The lighting that they're going to do, the county has lighting restrictions or guidelines, requirements. And the lighting they're going to have there is going to be less lighting than what's up in this parking lot of this brand new building. They won't have any lights in the parking lot because they don't need them. But the buildings being white and the reflection they get off of that downward lighting, it lights the parking lot up just fine for them. There are other places they have, they have no 24-hour use at all. They don't let any of their clients park materials or whatever they're storing inside. They don't let them park outside. They will let them have a delivery vehicle outside. With the rents that they charge, they get above-average users, tenants in their places. But they're very professional, have a great reputation for what they do. They're both neat freaks. So it'll be, it'll be a nice place. And it does meet the 2035 plan. They're going to have about $18 million, give or take a little, invested in this project. That's, that's, that's big for a little 10-acre tract out there. The Planning Commission was also asked, well, are they going to plan on trying to get a, you know, on-ramp, off-ramp there? No, they have zero desire to do that at all. That was never, ever even discussed. I could see where it'd be a concern from, from, you know, from somebody. But that, that's, that's really about it. They, again, their landscaping buffers will probably be more than what the county requires because these guys are, they're pretty, what do you call it? I don't want to say anything, but they're very, very detailed. Yeah, yeah, quality freaks. They're good operators, good owners. That's about it. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Heeline.
All right, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
I'll just say that, you know, obviously this is an example of a piece of property above the river that could potentially move towards residential and be an increased burden in the community and increase the cost to serve or potentially move to the commercial world and provide revenues to offset that burden for the rooftops in the county. And this is a very significant amount of investment on a relatively small parcel in an area that backs up to Shutterfly, it's up on Colethorp Road. I don't know if everyone's familiar, but you know, across the street, there's some residential, but this is an area that historically has been, you know, we've had the Shutterfly site right there. Light industrial is certainly not something new to the area. So I think it's a good fit and I welcome the investment and glad that it's not multifamily.
I just made a few notes as, as Tim was going through his presentation. Commercial versus residential. You know, we've, we've all had the discussion, how do we get more commercial into York County and start to scale back on some of the rooftops? And that's one of the, one of the notes I mentioned. And, you know, projects like these don't impact our schools. It's not putting more kids in school. It's going to obviously pay a bigger return into our general fund on taxes when, when the time comes versus us being upside down in some other situations where residential probably hits our general funds a little harder, obviously. But these are the type of projects that, that continue to bring jobs, continue to increase, I guess, just pretty much bottom line. And I was, I was shocked to see that a 6-2 vote on the Planning Commission. My, I wanted to know just personally, kind of like, what other concerns did the Planning Commission have those two members not to support, you know, commercial over possible residential? But that's another question for another day.
So.
Ms. Love?
Yeah, so I obviously support commercial over residential. But if, rather than have a description, I would love to have a visual of what this looks like, what their other properties look like. So maybe Tim, if you could send that, send that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off of what Joel and etc. said. Again, this is a great example of what we can do in our area to, again, offset the impact of residential growth and bring additional revenues in our area. You know, the impact of Act 388, you know, across the board has been tough on businesses. And this, the more businesses we get in there, it just levels out the taxation from, from that perspective. And again, it helps to support the area and mitigates the amount of impact on our schools. So I think it's a very good fit. And again, we're doing, looking at that across the board, you know, in our districts. And it's a very good example of what, what's going on here. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Council to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the York County zoning code, section 155.347, temporary prohibition of new development within the Lake Wiley zoning overlay district to extend the temporary prohibition on apartments, condominiums and townhome dwellings to extend the section's expiration date to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion in a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Do we have a new motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Mr. Winkler?
I just want to say I expressed a little concern about extending this last time. I want to, you know, just don't want us to be in a perpetual thing to where we just, this temporary prohibition becomes more of a permanent type prohibition. So this will probably be the last time I will vote for this extension. So hopefully we get everything worked out and recode and get all this done to where we can move on and not just keep extending this.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We have no old business, so we move to directly to new business. Council to consider the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation for fiscal year 2022, funding the total amount of $42,250.
I move to approve. But I would like to move to approve with the amendment to the committee's recommendations to change the NAACP award to $5,000, which we did last year. And I'll explain why if I, if I get a second on that.
Second.
Motion in a second. We're now in discussion.
This is one of the, the things that brings in people from all over the southeast, not just South Carolina. This is the oldest, longest-running, continuously running NAACP era Martin Luther King parade in the state of South Carolina. And according to Mr. Madden, they are one of the best at their paperwork and making sure that they cross every T and dot every I when they do their applications with their receipts and everything. Some of our applicants aren't as, quite as detailed with it. And so, you know, just because of that, you know, they requested more than that, but I would like to keep us, keep them at the same 5,000 that we did last year instead of 1,500 that was recommended by the committee.
Any other discussion? Mr. Roddy?
We're going to have to adjust any of the.
I believe there's 3,500 more that we could put in there, but I'll let Mr. Madden answer that.
The way the motion is, we're fine. We have enough reserves. We can handle that.
And, and I know members of the CBB and other organizations, you know, kind of watch out meetings. I would love to get this on their radar for them to also help push and promote this particular event. Because like Robert said, it's, it's a great event, bringing people from all over. And the pride in this event being the longest-running parade in the state of South Carolina is huge for this area. And obviously coming off of holiday and another opportunity to get people to come out and get out the house again. And we want to see people visit downtown York. And that's one of the reasons we kept this building downtown York was to keep York on that vibrant track versus us moving out on Alexander Love Highway and those areas. So good to see organizations still doing great things to bring people downtown York.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Council to ratify a one-year contract renewal option regarding RFP number 2690 for temporary staffing services with Marathon Staffing, Inc. of Columbia, South Carolina.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Council to ratify a one-year contract renewal regarding RFP. 2690 for temporary staffing services with Spur Staffing, Inc. of Huntsville, Alabama.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. I was confused by the RFP having the same number. Council to approve a substitution for appropriated funding regarding the purchase of an intercept body scanner for use by York County Prison from Tech 84 of Howay, California for the, for a total purchase price of $164,000 as part of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Committee and other reports. Joel Hamilton, Chairman of the Planning and Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, sir. Planning and Economic Development Committee met just prior to this meeting. Present were Councilman Love and Councilman Adet. We discussed the building code amendment update and pulled two items regarding pools and spas as well as fees out to defer to the zoning committee. Also received an update from our economic direct, economic development director regarding direction of our board as well as project updates that we received in executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Do we need to go ahead and have direction for that to go to the zoning committee? If so, we'll do that. Councilmember New Knowledge in the comments. Mr. Roddy?
This is my segment. I have two things for tonight. First, I want to congratulate South Point High School for winning the state championship on last Thursday. Want to get with Karen to see if we can invite the coach or some of the staff up to congratulate them publicly. They're definitely keeping Football City, USA alive and well for our area. And also I noticed we have some guests in the back. I wanted to give them an opportunity to at least recognize their school and them visiting with us tonight. We don't get too many visitors and I'm sure they're coming from a school or class. So if y'all don't mind, what school you visiting from? Okay, glad to have you.
You picked a good night. You picked, you picked a short meeting.
Exactly.
Any other council members?
I just wanted to echo Mr. Roddy's comments and congratulate South Point and Coach Hallman and all the student athletes that worked so hard to bring another state championship home to this community.
Mr. Winkler?
I'll just make a quick comment until Mr. Madden. I kind of hinted at this before I was at the South Carolina Association of Counties Board meeting or legislative session this past weekend. As Association of Counties Board member, we voted to do a relief refund. So all of our Association of Counties dues basically last year will be refunded to the county. Association of Counties is in good shape financially and they decided with everything that was going on with COVID and stuff that they will refund one year's worth of dues to all counties in the state for that. So you'll be getting a letter with that check here before too long.
Anyone else? I'll echo Go Stallions. We are proud of them for a state champions. That's impressive. Do we have a motion? We do not have any citizen concerns. Do we have a motion for executive session?
We do. A move that we go into executive session for the receipt of legal advice regarding county boards and commissions. Also for the receipt of legal advice relating to a contractual matter regarding thistle 1 and thistle 2 and also for economic development, potential property acquisition.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we will move directly into executive session. Session, no action was taken. Do we have any motions?
We have two motions. The first motion relates to.
The first motion relates to Thistle 1, and it is a motion to authorize closing terms as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Second motion relates to Thistle 2, and it is a motion to authorize closing terms as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.